Welcome to the AMSA Board of Trustees December Meeting. So this meeting is being recorded and is streaming on Facebook Live. So you can watch it there if you wish, or visit the recording later. I'm looking for volunteers for a timekeeper.
If Jess doesn't say anything, then I'll take it.
I believe that the last time Roger indicated a preference to have other people share the duties. I am happy to do it, but I also am happy to not do it.
I'll take it.
Raul's our timekeeper. So first, so first up, we have...
Roger, excuse me Roger, you did not mention executive session?
Yes. Hey Sarah, could you, to my work email, could you email me a copy of the agenda, please? I misplaced it in my...
Which email did you say, Roger?
The work email. So, otherwise keep me on track for if I miss any agenda items. So yes, we'll be going into executive session to discuss the purchase or sale of real estate and not resuming to open session as discussing in public would be detrimental to our position. Next up, we have public speak. Is that correct?
I think you were gonna announce, it says in the minutes, Cindy.
Yes, sorry. I have my agenda in front of me momentarily, thanks to Sarah. But, oh yes, it greets me to announce that Cindy Zomar has resigned from the Board of Trustees to spend more time with her family. She is going to continue to volunteer for AMSA things, but will no longer be serving on the Board of Trustees or on the Development Committee. Well, thank you Cindy for your time and efforts. Been much appreciated and really benefited in the community and from the Development Committee from all the things that she's done for us. So thank you Cindy. Next up, I believe we have open public speak.
Yes, public comment. And right now, we only have one person signed up, which is Tom Azeredo. So Tom, I'm gonna hand things over to you. And if anyone else signs up, I will announce them afterwards.
Okay, thank you. I'm tired, so I will try to be focused on reading what I have written in front of me. It's not that I don't want to look at you. I first begin by expressing immense gratitude to the many colleagues and friends who have shared their reflections with me these past few weeks. To them, I want to say you have graced what I would say was a focus and a purpose that this public statement might not otherwise possess. Okay, now to the board. I would like to speak to you tonight about the conversation that transpired at the October Board Meeting regarding the deep training that the staff is currently undergoing. Now, regardless of how one feels about the content of the PD, its methodology, the fundamental philosophy behind it, or perhaps even the presenter herself, Dr. Amante Jackson, we should never forget that the academic culture at AMSA, both in its rigorous nature and its abiding care for the potential within each of those who entrust their future to us. It demands an institution where all can discuss ideas openly. This is critical, not only for our students, but also for those who teach or guide them, for the staff and administration that sustains them, and for you, the board, who ultimately is our leadership. Now, earlier this fall, a teacher communicating through the voice of our faculty representative shared some pointedly expressed concerns on the PD. Subsequently, as a viewing of the record of the last meeting makes clear, this generated a direct backlash from other teachers, administrators, and members of the board. So why am I here today? I'm here today because I wish the board to consider if its public response, a response which was both substantial and clearly sincere, may even so, in its tenor, have unintentionally created an atmosphere that instills fear among those with differing views, that unintentionally can stifle debate, and again, unintentionally brought some risk to the intellectual health of the classroom environment in which we teach and learn. Now, I believe all of us here, not just here in this meeting or viewing it, but here or elsewhere in the community that is AMSA, as stakeholders in AMSA, do care deeply, all of us do care deeply about its core values and its mission. I believe the faculty is passionate about teaching and that all of us are willing to do our level best as human beings to teach and encourage students of all backgrounds and abilities. Now, if it is idealistic to believe this, it is yet an ideal very much worth aiming for. For this, we are duty-bound to nurture honesty and integrity, even if it comes in forms we may not have personally chosen for ourselves. I am convinced it is in a climate which embraces the free exchange of ideas, sustained by goodwill and respect for each other, that the best of what we have to offer will be allowed to thrive. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
I do not have anyone else signed up at this point. Is there anyone on the phone that wanted to make a public comment? Okay, Roger, I would say we can probably move to the next agenda item.
A quick question for Tom is great and I really appreciate your feedback. Would you like to include a written copy of what you said within the meeting materials?
Sure. Who should I send it to?
Please send it to Sarah.
Okay, I will do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and thanks Sarah, I do have the agenda in front of me now to try to keep us on track. So, you know, this is a new trial thing that we're doing on the board is, you know, given that we've reached the end of public speak, is there any item we wish to flag for discussion for the end of the meeting? Hearing nothing at this point, we'll revisit it. I'll be asking again after the ED faculty rep and parent rep. So onward to votes, I believe. We'll have a vote to approve the 22nd October minutes.
Before that, I think Sarah, you wanted me to mention that I just caught a really tiny typo, which was lean instead of learn, and Sarah's already made an adjustment and we'll make a change. That was it.
So I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous board meeting in October.
A second hit.
All right. Other discussion? Hearing none?
Was that Liz who was second?
Yes, Sarah, it was. Sorry, I should have said who it was.
Okay, Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Roger? Yes, motion passes unanimously. Onto Executive Director Report.
Roger, I think you missed me and I'm a yes, but I just wanted to know you noted that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, now we have unanimous approval. Thank you for catching that. Ellen, you have the floor as Executive Director.
Alrighty. Can you all see that?
Yeah.
That's coming up. Should come up. All right, well, I welcome everyone out here tonight. Tom, thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. I appreciate you being here. If you're still there, you are still here. Okay. All right, so let me just, there we go. Welcome out to everyone tonight. This is our report from November, December, which is really, it's hard to believe. All right, so we're gonna start with just a little update from the Scheduling Avengers. We're gonna do an HVAC update. We're gonna talk a little bit about the state rankings, the SAT and the AP. And we have done a couple different, you know, little pulse surveys that we've done internally with parents and students. I'm gonna pull a little bit of data out of there. And then just one little piece of razzle-dazzle time and then some upcoming events that you might like to be aware of. All right, so you know, it's been an interesting year and we started late, but all of a sudden, October, we find ourselves at even the beginning of October and start thinking, oh my gosh, we need to plan for next year, which seems so far away, especially this year. But the department chairs and the teachers and Scheduling Avengers, including Mike and Brianna, Kate, have been very busy already planning the schedule and the calendar for next year, the program of studies. The program of studies will be published, looks like Monday, December 7th. And then the teachers' course recommendations, they start recommending levels for students on beginning January 5th. And then the students will do their requests between February 10th and February 25th. So they'll have over February vacation to work on that with their families as well. And then the department chairs take all the tallies that they get from the Avengers and they decide how many sections they need of each one of the classes. And that's based on the numbers of requests. So just want to give you an update that we are on that and that there's a whole team of folks that are putting all of that information together. And now I want to give you an update on the HVAC system. These are just some things that have already completed and things that are in process. The air balancing survey was completed in mid-October. We did get and receive the report back. Took longer than we had expected, but we did receive it. It's been reviewed by the landlord and the school. That was all completed just prior to Thanksgiving. And now, in the month of December, we have the air balancer, the engineer, HVAC control tech, and Eric are going to be meeting to adjust the airflow in all of the rooms. And so the report is actually broken down into how many circulations of air in each one of the rooms, and it was done individually. And so now we have a readout, we could tell you exactly what the airflow is in each one of the rooms in all three buildings. And now they have to go back in and they have to correct them. Some of them were high, they were triple what they needed to be. And then some of them, the ones especially in the upper school building that the dampers aren't working properly, there was zero. There was zero airflow in at least a half a dozen of those rooms in the upper school building. And so, you know, that was obviously bad news for us. But those things can be adjusted and fixed and they are going to be going out to do that work on 165, that's the white building on December 8th. And then what's probably gonna be more complicated actually is the 199 building, that's the upper school building, and the 201 building. And they're scheduled for December 17th and 18th. Then, all that information is compiled into a report. They go out once again and make sure that it is, once they make all the adjustments, that it is actually in compliance and that we're getting the right level of airflow. And then we will get a certified report and we're expecting that to arrive mid-late January. So I think, believe last month when we talked, we were hoping it would be done, the letter that went home to families, we were hoping it would be done by the first of the year and it looks like it's gonna take a little bit longer than that. You can see that, you know, the 165 building is scheduled for the 8th. It took us a little bit longer, obviously, with the other two buildings. We need to consult Dave and get his permission to do the work on those buildings. He's been very, very cooperative and easy to work with through this process. And now we're gonna talk a little bit about the SAT and the AP scores, comparing... Some of you have been around for a while, you know that the state actually takes the data from the College Board and they put it into a state ranking and it's on the Department of Education website. And so it's updated usually end of October. They did it in November this year, and so I have those. But before we look at those, I just want to talk a little bit about the differences and things that we saw this year. First of all, when we look at the SAT, students typically, now they can take it, you know, they can take it as a 10th grade if they want, but typically the cycle for this is that students take their SATs, hopefully multiple times the spring of their junior year. And then they often will take one or two more in the fall of their senior year. Okay? So keeping in mind then that the school year 2018-19, that was a regular school year, the kids took it. The seniors who have graduated already took the test as juniors. Then they came in in the fall and they took the tests again, okay? But our current seniors, all of the spring tests were canceled for the most part. So they did not have an opportunity to take the test for the first time, many of them. There's some sprinkling that did, but for the most part, they did not. And they're taking them now, but the data I'm gonna show you for 2019 and 20 does not have any test results, obviously, from this spring. So you're not going to see really test scores from our current seniors. Because the test that they're taking this fall, if they're able to find one, won't be in the scores until next year. So that's one thing, just to clarify how that the SATs, the scores are basically the same, but I'm almost thinking that the scores are almost from the same kids. There's a lot of overlap there. AP, we've talked about AP a lot and how different it was this year. They used to be three to four hour exams. And they were done in person with proctors. This year, they were 45-minute exams done at home, online, very, very different. Kids weren't ready for it. But as we've stated in prior months, kids did an excellent job. Teachers were amazing and everyone did the best that they could. And you're gonna be kind of, I'm thrilled with the results that we're gonna see on the state rankings. So once again, SAT, all students are taking a reading, writing, and a math section. There's two sections. They take it between the spring of their 11th grade and fall of 12th grade. And once again, all the spring exams were canceled for the most part. And AP, just to kind of put some context around it, we offer 18 exams. College Board actually offers 38. We don't offer them all. And we offer AP exams in grades 10, 11th, and 12th. And some high schools, you know, offer them in 9th. We don't, but we encourage access. We really want kids to take AP classes and get an idea of what it's like to take college classes. So first, we're gonna look at the SAT scores. Now you can look up in the top in the yellow where it says that in the 2018-19 school year, there were 185 SAT exams taken. Not individual kids, but SAT exams taken by our students, whether they were 11th graders in the spring or 12th graders in the fall. And you can see that this past year, 19-20, only 106 exams were taken. And that's just to show you, you know, how many less exams were taken because of the COVID situation. So once again, we are talking apples and oranges here, but I still thought it was kind of interesting because honestly, when you look at the scores there and you run down, you see 2018 and the reading/writing average score was 624. In 2019, it was 625. And we were, in 2018, we were 10th ranked in reading and writing on the state level and this year, we're 12th. In math, we were 662 in 2018. This year, this past year, we were 667, up a little bit, but still state ranking of number four in the state. I wanted to, you know, give you the information because, just to kind of keep consistent year over year. But, you know, obviously, this was a different kind of year, but still, our kids did a great job when they took the test in the fall. Unfortunately, they weren't able to do the spring test, but colleges have made accommodations for that. So now, this was our state AP rankings in 2019. So this is the same slide, copy and paste it from last year. You'll see that College Board reported that we had 483 tests administered and 89% of our kids scored a 3 and above. And when you bring that into the state rankings, it ranked us at number 27. Now, what's a little funny about the state report that's on the Department of Education website is that the numbers don't always align. And I'm not sure why last year the state had that we administered 490 exams. We didn't, it was 483. But we do know that there's always a difference between what the state percentages of 3+ is and that's because they don't take all the scores. So if you are administering an exam, like let's say French, AP French, if you're testing 10 or less students, they just don't count it in your percentages of 3+. I'm not sure why they do that. Maybe they feel there's some equity issues there. I haven't been able to find anything on their website that why they do it. I just know that they do. So when you look last year at the ranking for our AP scores, we were number 41. But if you actually take what College Board records, which is all of our scores encompassed, and you put it in the list, we were 27. So this is last year, state reported 41. College Board, when you put the College Board numbers in there, we moved to 27. This year, 532 exams were given. And that's a tremendous jump there. 532 exams, we know that our scores were 92% of our students scored 3+. And the state, once again, because they dropped the exams with less than 10, has us at 86.8. State has us down at 29, but if we use the 92%, which is what College Board reports using all of our scores, we actually this year are 14th in the state. I spoke at an optional all-staff meeting yesterday afternoon. We have a check-in every couple of weeks and reported this to everyone and once again, just expressed to them how grateful we are for their hard work, for the teachers that have worked with our students to get them to this place under the most severe circumstances that we've ever taught in and for our students and how hard they worked. And so I would once again like to express our gratitude to the students who put their hearts and souls into the AP classes, even under the conditions that we were living in in the spring, to their parents who supported them for all that work and for the teachers and for the heart and soul and passion that they put into teaching these classes. So even under those circumstances, all kids taking these exams under the conditions which they did, which was a first time, all the way around, different tests, different testing conditions, online, our kids really rose to the occasion and have a state ranking of 14th in the state for their AP scores. So congratulations to all of them and very, very proud for the work that they've done.
Ellen, it's Liz. Could I just interrupt for a minute to commend the teachers and the students on the work that they did? Because this is amazing information. And I know that the tests were much different than what they were expecting. So I think the fact that they were able to pivot and adjust is just unbelievable.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Appreciate that.
Could I just add one tiny bit of context?
Oh, love to be sure.
As an AP teacher myself, one of the things that College Board did because the situation was so unusual is that they allowed kids to cancel their registration at no fee. So it was very easy for kids to reach a certain point in the year, especially because of COVID, and saying, nope, I'm out. So I just want to note that, and I'm surprised at that particular number, that that number of 532 exams taken reflects a commitment by our students to not take that easy way out and to continue with that difficult path, attending classes that were optional, that were extra. I'm stunned at the number of kids. We didn't have a lot of kids sort of get, take that get out of jail free card and it literally was free to cancel your exam and to have those scores with that high number of exams is like, yay. That's on the kids. That is on the kids.
It is on the kids. We have amazing kids and thank you so much Jess, because you're absolutely right and I would have been remiss in not mentioning that. I'm gonna add on top of that, just to show how amazing our kids are, is, you know, AMSA has never had an attendance problem. And we typically run about 96% in our attendance. The state averages around 94%. And I want to let everyone know that this year, our attendance is at 98%. 98% of our kids are showing up every single day and they are working hard. They are working like they maybe never worked before and our teachers are too. And so that's remarkable. It shows, just as Jess said, they could opt out. They could be no-shows. They could turn their cameras off and walk away, but they haven't. Our kids have persevered and so have our teachers. And they are learning. And you're gonna see in a few minutes that the parents are happy with what they're seeing at home as well. So once again, we strive for excellence, academic excellence. I understand, I was talking to Roger and Raul earlier, I understand what our kids are missing socially and yet we're a school and we're teaching them. And social interactions are always part of it. But our job is to teach and to care for kids. And I think we're really, it's amazing what they've done and they've really risen to the occasion as well as the staff. All right, so we do have our parents' survey. There's just a few results. If you're interested in seeing more, I'm happy to show them to you. We also have a few from the student survey. Want to just mention though to you that this survey was sent out right after the announcement that we were staying home for term two was made. So within the week or so, we did send out that email, which, you know, obviously came from the school with a heavy heart. Nobody wants to be home. And I think you'll see with the kids that there's some of that feeling that's reflected as well. So, the first question was, so it's interesting, my bar has just run right straight across the words there. So it looks like it says, it's the one that says, how would you rate the virtual learning experience? Five being excellent and one meaning very poor. And this is the family survey, parents, guardians. 92.4% of our families rated our virtual learning program excellent to good, 3 to 5. 92.4% of our parents are very happy with our program. Especially 47.4% rated it a four. It's over 70% of our students ranked our virtual learning as excellent to very good to excellent. I shared this data with the staff yesterday as well. Just so, so thrilled and proud of their work because they took an AMSA curriculum and they created an online program, which, as I said earlier to Roger and Raul, I would put up against any curriculum in the state of what we're offering at AMSA. And this question about do the parents feel that their children are making progress this year? 66.7% felt, yes, they're making progress. 24.8% said they weren't sure, right? They weren't sure, and I'm gonna address that in a minute. And 8.5 didn't feel that they were. So we've got some work to do there, some of them might be perception. But I'm gonna focus for a minute on the not sure. And the not sure question is something that now our data is starting to come in and we're going to, Brianna and Mike and Kate Driver have already been diving into the first term grades. And we're comparing those grades from the class. So example, if you're looking at 10th... so example, if you're looking at tenth grade uh grades, and we're going to compare them to how that class did in in ninth grade. Um and and so that we're comparing class from this year against class from last year. How did they do first term compared to how did they do first term last year? And we're looking at um, you know, any kind of um anything that's that's jumping out from us. There's also um, and and really, uh the other piece of this was um we've got Kate's data. We're talking to the depart, we've, we met with department chairs on Monday to start to talk about the mid-year assessments and how we're going to um, what data we're going to collect for mid-year, also looking for progress, finding out how far, get a mid-year check-in on how far we've made it through each one of the curriculums um and what the grades are compared uh to the years before. But it will be interesting to find out from the teachers where they where they feel, um, you know, at the mid-year, they should be about fifty percent, but but are we? Are we at twenty-five percent? Have we gotten through just a quarter of what we had hoped? Um or half? And so we'll we'll be pulling all that together. But the first piece is to look at those grades and to start answering that question. Are they, are they learning? Um we believe they are, and I think in the end that we're going to have enough data pulled together to um to prove just that. But we've got our first, our first bit of coming in right now with our first term grades. Um and this question was, how do you feel your child's adapting um to the online um world that they are now living in? And eighty-seven percent really felt that they were adapting very well or or fairly well. Now, we know that there's some students that aren't. We know there's some adults that aren't. This is hard on everyone. Um and so one other thing that we're looking for in first term grades is right down to the individual student. Do we have students who normally are B students who suddenly are really, really struggling? And we're going to compare those grades year to year to, and we've also asked the teachers to really, you know, get a visual read on the kids to to let us know and submit names of students who they feel are disengaged or really struggling um either academically or just with the new remote learning um program. Because it it could be a number of things in in play here. And so we've, we've got to kind of tease that out. Um ask the parents how optimistic they are about the weeks ahead, remembering that they had just gotten the letter from us saying that they were going to be home until February first. Um but still, the parents felt you know, eighty-two point two percent of them feel, felt feel very optimistic um to, you know, moderately optimistic about the weeks ahead. Um I I wonder if with all the news of the um vaccines, if we might we might see um a little, things a little bit differently. Uh maybe we're starting to feel like there might be some some light at the end of the tunnel. Um I know that I am. I I sure hope our families are starting to feel that way as well. This was just a quote that kind of popped out to me from one of the parents. Um and and it just, I maybe captured a little bit of what I was feeling or what I feel like, you know, the your heart breaks for the the kids. I mean, it certainly does. And she said, um, I'm assuming it was a she, sorry. Um th- this person said, we are really grateful for all the efforts the school is making. The isolation is wearing on our students, and these are, there's real feelings of loss. We do not have suggestions on how to fix that, but we just like, um but just like for us grownups, the uncertainty of when things might change is creating a level of stress and worry. And I think that 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 speaks for many of us and how we're feeling, whether we're students or whether we're adults. That, you know, everyone at the school is doing the very, very best job that they can do. The kids are putting a tremendous amount of effort into learning in a way that they've never had to learn before, and yet the isolation is wearing on all of us. It's wearing on the adults, it's wearing on the kids, and there is great loss there, especially for our seniors. And um and we we talk about them often and what we can do to um try to make this year memorable for them. And once again, the uncertainty of of what is ahead for for all of us, we're we're all just getting through day, one day at a time. So the student survey, once again, it was, it's really um interesting that you put a survey out like this and um the percentages of of how many, the percentage of kids who participate from each grade, um it's it's very even. Um it's it's interesting. So uh the the first question for them um is overall, how would you rate? You know, at this point now, it's the first eight weeks, uh nine weeks, something like that. And from fantastic to unbearable, the numbers have shifted down a little bit. The first five, uh first five weeks of school, the the kids had rated their experience up to an eighty-two point five. They're at about a seventy-one percent now.
Ellen.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, uh five-minute mark.
Okay, so they, obviously, things, you know, they're they're getting, they're getting tired of it. We all, we all are. We don't know if the same students um answered or not. Asking how manageable their workload is, seven, um seventy, almost seventy-seven percent said that it was somewhat manageable, which meant some nights I am overloaded and some nights I have less work. Um not unusual, and I would say probably uh pretty typical for a regular school year. Um we had almost ten percent that said it was very manageable, but we also have thirteen and a half percent that say that it is unmanageable and just too much to do. When we talk about optimism, we were concerned about this last time. It's fairly steady. Um but we have about sixty-eight percent of them that were feeling optimistic. Once again, going into this model, these kids, when we were told this, they're facing twelve more weeks of of working from home. So then we asked them, so what can we do to make your experience in term two better? Um, you know, what what are the concerns? And of course, the first one overwhelmingly was less homework. Reduce the workload. It's too much. Um they they asked for more stretch breaks, less screen time, um more time to get things done. Um they're, they continue to have some concerns about uh teaching into academic workshop. And I think sometimes we get passionate and continue to teach um or um just just so much want to squeeze in a little bit, a little bit more um uh curriculum and and content and sometimes squeak into those. So what what is the administration, the initial administrative responses that the, all the student survey, all the responses and everything has been shared with the staff so that they can see firsthand from the kids what they're saying? Um, we uh also discussed the results a little bit at the meeting that we had yesterday and once again reminded the staff that it was there. And we have scheduled class meetings. So um Mike, Brianna, and I will be meeting with with um each one of the grades during, for a Zoom meeting. Three or four of them on the seventh, um and then the remainders on the fourteenth, and we'll get a chance to talk to the kids. I want to talk to them a little bit about why we're not doing hybrid right now, uh get them up to date and also hear their their feedback and concerns. We do have a spirit week coming up, um December fourteenth to eighteenth. Hopefully that will get them excited and thinking about something fun. Um parents from ninth and twelfth graders have requested their own family forum. We're going to do that. We figure ninth grade is a good transition year. It's a good time to do that. And twelfth grade, we really want to engage the parents on how we can make this year more special for their kids. Additional winter opportunities outdoors, ski club has, is starting up. Um Mark Vidal is working on a uh walking club for lower school. We're looking at the potential of of winter sports and encouraging the kids. We have more than uh approximately thirty clubs running right now. Really quickly, we had a wonderful, Mark Vidal put together this wonderful series of women leaders in STEM, Black leaders in STEM, and LGBTQ leaders in STEM. You can see the list of the companies that were represented. There was, it was a panel series. Uh other schools were invited. This was done in conjunction. Um you know, Mark Vidal put together the Marlboro STEM Council, which includes Marlboro High and Asabet um and AMSA, um as well as uh town leaders, community leaders, and leaders from these companies. And all these folks were all involved in these. I watched bits and pieces, um some of them all, almost um all the way through. They were fantastic. They're on the website. They're in Facebook. You can watch them. Um and then just some upcoming events. December seventh, we have our, this Monday night, our junior college night for parents at five-thirty with Kate Driver and the rest of the counseling gang. On December fifteenth, we are having our virtual staff holiday party. Um Ms. Bowen, our queen of QuizBowl, is going to um come up with with a little bit of uh quizzing kind of entertainment for for the staff. And so we're very excited about that. But one other little special piece that's happening that night is that our very own Ann Richards is going to be retiring on December eighteenth, and we will be honoring Ann um at that um at that holiday party. If uh the board will share the link with you, if any of you'd like to stop by, um feel free to do that. Ann is a is a founder. She she was instrumental in the success um of of AMSA. And I'm grateful for her. She's an absolutely wonderful person. She'll be deeply, deeply missed. Um and we will be honoring her at that day as well. Um D-Roe is having a Coliseum night. Very excited about that. That's January sixth. Please get that on your calendar. You'll enjoy it. And February third is our eighth grade step-up night with our board, uh, excuse me, with our department chairs. And then for all of us, uh we have the January twenty-third, the strategic planning meeting, but we're actually doing the cultural and diversity training, which has been confirmed with Dineshah from ten to twelve with all of you. And happy holidays. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Right on time. So um the only one thing I put on the chat, what time is the holiday party on the fifteenth?
Um Sarah, what what time is it? Three-thirty-ish?
I think I just put it in there. Uh it's three-thirty. It's it's an all-staff meeting at their time, the usual time, I believe.
We will, we will share that, when, once we have the link, um we will share it out to all of all of you in case you'd like to pop in and say hello.
I'll send out a, an invitation, sort of a notification with that information.
Thank you.
And I'm curious about veteran society too. So whenever those details, I'm assuming they'll be on the website or something.
Yes, we will get those out to all of you, and they'll be in the the weekly newsletter that comes out as well. Um also, just reminder to those of you um who have younger siblings at home or um we do have our our admissions, um application is open. It's very simple, the five-minute name and address kind of application. It's right on the website. Um and registration is open until January eighth for next year.
Keep trying. Okay, um questions for, uh questions for Ellen?
Ellen, real quick, the the January twenty-third meeting, virtual, yes?
Yes, yes.
Just checking.
Yes. Link is coming on that as well.
Other questions? I'm hearing none. Thank you, Ellen. That's a great report. Lots of good news there.
Thank you, Roger.
Compliments to the perseverance of our teachers and students in a challenging time to uh do such such great work and not opt out. Uh let's see, Jess, faculty, faculty rep report. You have the floor.
I was muted, sorry. Hi, everyone. Um uh today, a, the Panorama survey went out to faculty members. So um faculty members were not, I think they had an avenue to kind of give feedback to the board directly. So I have a very scant report today um because of that. So um I would just say that um the concerns of the staff are probably related to timing the most. We just had report cards go out as we came back from Thanksgiving break. Um and we had that late start to the year, and then all of a sudden you're like, wait, we're in the middle of term two and we have to send out more grades. And this compressed time schedule, I think, is frustrating to staff members. Of course, we've, I've said this repeatedly, but we we have fewer class minutes and um you know, as the year goes on, that sort of builds and builds and builds. There's a cumulative effect to um trying to keep up with that time limit. You, there's sort of never a point where you just sort of catch up. Um and I I think that that sort of is where a lot of faculty members are reporting frustrations that I'm hearing. Um but I I don't think, I mean, I think it's sort of an inevitable thing and just part of the process. I don't, I don't know, there's not really a fix to it. So I'm just kind of passing on that that's where we are. Um I will say on a positive note, I think as we continue to go on in the school year, especially as we talk to more and more of our people we know, family members or colleagues or that teach in, teach at other schools or other schools that we send our own children to. Um I think we're really, and I just want to give credit here, I think we're really seeing the fruits of the labor of the people who did all of that planning over the summer. Um I was talking to my cousin who teaches um in Massachusetts in another town. And um I I've heard this from a lot of other teachers, like one of the small decisions that AMSA made, um and I'm sure that students are, they don't like it, but the the cameras on decision um has made such a huge difference. And um I talked to other teachers at other school districts and they find that frustrating and it's very hard to get a level of engagement. And I even saw amongst my own um students who were running a club event that they were seeing the value because they were going to require of their own peers to turn their cameras on for a club event, um which I found really interesting because I know they complain and they would like to turn their cameras off. Um but the, when we lack these connections of being there in person, that little detail, it sometimes seems so annoying or like not a big deal. Um but I I think that those types of decisions that people thought about and that AMSA has really made a commitment to have a quality online presence has really made a difference. Um I think also the fact that we know that we're home, that I feel really for my, for people who are in hybrid models or that they're, or that school districts that have to on on a whim um turn to an an all-online because there was a party over the weekend or these back-and-forth scenarios that a lot of school districts are dealing with. Um I I think that that we're, the um stability that AMSA is able to offer is is been very helpful for us as teachers and I imagine as learners as well. Um so um I would like to say that teachers continue to, um you know, as we adjust to this, we're continuing to adjust. We're continuing to explore um new ways to deliver the content. It's very difficult in the online world to just um to, well, it's it's very easy to get in a rut. Like, here's what I do. I put on the NearPod and I talk, or I just talk with a PowerPoint. Or, right, you find something that works and then you stick with it. I feel like teachers are really at the point now where they're like, I gotta, I gotta mix it up. I gotta do something different. In department meetings and amongst ourselves, we're sharing ideas of ways to do it differently that doesn't, that doesn't um it still delivers a quality of content, doesn't compromise that that, but um is able to have variety and and share ideas and and do things in a way that that is engaging to the students. I think, I think there's a recognition that we all want to do that. And again, I, you know, Ellen mentioned the attendance and it came up with the AP scores. Um that the this, I really have been genuine, genuinely impressed with AMSA students will, their willingness to engage in this joint experiment that we're all involved in. And um I have been impressed with my own personal students and from what I hear from other other teachers as well. Uh there's, I I think it's a really nice reminder of what an a special and unique community we have at AMSA, where all of us are here because we want to genuinely learn. We we love it. That's like what we're here for. Um and even if students don't like to admit it sometimes, uh they do like it, and we can see that the the proof of that is in their, in their actions. And um I, the the optimism question was interesting to me. I I I'm feeling optimistic about about learning at AMSA. I hope many of my colleagues are. Um I I think they are. There's, of course, frustrations. There are, of course, things that um, you know, weigh us down. There's, of course, you know, people saying, I don't know if we'll ever get back in. It feels like we'll never get back in. But gen- generally, I think that those are tempered by the fact that what we are able to do is so rich and of such a high quality. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Jess. Questions for Jess?
Thanks, Jess, for the thoughtful comments.
All right. Uh Maura, you have the floor.
Um I will be even briefer than Jess. That was not brief, Jess. I got communications. Um it's actually been relatively quiet this past month. Um and I I got excited that with the email that went out earlier this week. I'm like, ooh, maybe that'll prompt some some emails, but it didn't. Um I think obviously, you know, parents, at least the parents that I speak to on a regular basis, um super supportive, always kind of questioning, like, are we doing the right thing on our end? Um how are our kids doing, right, with the balance or with the imbalance that they're feeling? Um I think it's interesting, the the commentary of less homework um or that it's mostly manageable. Okay, now my phone's ringing, sorry. Um that it's it's mostly manageable. Um, I think it's interesting because they don't have the extracurricular commitments too. So even at those times where it feels like it's a lot, if they had, you know, practice or something different, you know, it could be different. So I think they're just, the kids, from the parents that I speak to, the kids are just continuing to adjust. They're all adopting their own projects and, and just kind of figuring it out. Um, I do agree though, Jess, the cameras on piece. I have someone in a networking group and they're up in New Hampshire and his kid takes class from half under his covers because they don't need to put the cameras on. And he's like, he can't get his teenager out of bed to actively participate in class. And I was like, oh, that would never fly. So I find, I find it very interesting. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's relatively quiet on the home front. Anytime a question pops up sort of off cycle, I just reach out to administration and they've been great getting answers. So that's it for now. Well, I will say that we are starting to plan the golf tournament for next year because, you know, golf courses are okay, but we're looking at the summer. And I don't think we have definitive dates yet, but we're looking sort of towards the mid to late summer. More to come.
Look, thank you, Maura. Looking for, looking forward to hearing more about the golf tournament as, as the news develops. At this point, I'd like to check with the board to see if there's any discussion items from the meeting so far that we wish to discuss at the end of the meeting. All right. Hearing none. Like to go on to chair business. Uh, I've already said thank you to Cindy for her work, her hard work on the Board of Trustees. Look forward to getting her, her work in support of AMSA as a volunteer. Um, have exciting announcement, at least for me. Lucy Ferrante has agreed to join the Finance Committee. She's a former, was a former treasurer and former board member. So she is, um, going to be joining us in finance, bringing her expertise there. It will be great, great to have Lucy's continued participation there. And finally, the board offsite, which you've sort of seen some of the highlights will be covered more in the Governance Committee Report. And that's all I have from the Chair Business side. So any questions for the Chair? Okay, with that, uh, Kristin, Finance Committee Report.
Thanks, Roger. Um, I actually think we have a piece to vote on, right? Because we're submitting the updated budget to the board to vote on. I didn't want to interrupt you earlier. So I'm going to run through that first and share my summary. Can everyone see this lovely spreadsheet? It might look small. That's good. Thanks, Roger. Um, so, uh, the, as we mentioned a few months back, we have been, Leanna and Ellen and team have been working on updating the budget with any additional information related to all of the changes associated with COVID and any other new information we would have. Um, as a result, we have seen a couple of changes to the budget that we want everyone to take a look at. Uh, in a quick summary, um, we had originally a surplus of $60,000, a very close income and expense. And revised, we have increased the surplus to $377,000. And that 317,000 increase is a combination of additional income and lower expenses. Um, as for revenue, Leanna and Ellen and team have worked hard to go after as much of the grant money that's been available for COVID expenses as possible. That's increased our revenue by $381,000. Um, that is offset by expenses equal to that amount because they have to spend all of the money that they get in grant money. Uh, some of that is direct, uh, is a direct, uh, expense item and some of that is actually CapEx equipment, uh, that they've been able to spend. So they don't necessarily offset in the P and L. Um, in addition, we've, the school has a lot of income that's offset by expenses that are directly attributable to in-person school, like bus transportation revenue, uh, food service revenue, field trip revenue, homework club revenue, et cetera, which are not happening in person and therefore we're not collecting revenue for these items. Um, in addition, those are offset by expenses for transportation expense. We're not paying that. Um, some other food service expense, which we're not incurring, obviously, field trip expenses, et cetera. So that's all offset. We've also been able to save money in, um, Forks, uh, not having sports at our PE classes over at Forks. We've been able to defer some of that expense, which is good for the business, for the school. Um, and we've had some lower substitution and related payroll costs taxes for $64,000 too, which is not insubstantial. So a total change in expenses lower by 92,000 net, uh, which is good news for the budget this year of $317,000. Uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions. I'm happy to answer those now. If not, we can, and I can't see everyone, I'm going to try to open this up. Looking for hands. Anyone want to raise their hand? I hear somebody.
The vote is for updating the budget. Is that what it is?
Yes.
No, just out of curiosity from a governance perspective, what's the difference between having to update the budget and just, there being a difference between actuals and budget? Are we allocating things differently because of these lower expenses? Or what, what would trigger restating or having a revised budget?
Um, the, there's such a substantial amount of changes related to, um, having school be remote this year, that we wanted to have a revision to the budget. Uh, we didn't know if anything else significant would, significant would have occurred as a result of, uh, lower, lower revenue coming in from the state or anything as, as, you know, potentially. There was risk for early on when we were looking at the budget. We didn't know how impacted taxes and, and whatnot would be for the state and towns. Uh, so we wanted to hold that open. Um, typically, if there were any other significant changes that, what the budget does is it allows the school to operate within the budget without having to seek additional approvals. So to the extent that all of this grant money came through, we were able to put it in the budget and not have to go after additional approvals from the board every time there was a change to the budget. But that's the bulk of it.
But we're not, so reducing the amount is just for what's behind us? So we're not necessarily shortchanging our capacity to go back in person later in the year, correct?
Correct. This is all, this is all expenses that are, are gone for the first half of the year. We won't be incurring those. So for example, sports costs are still fully loaded in the budget, assuming that all the fall sports would just be shifted out. So, um, those have not been removed from the budget, for example. They may, from now on, all changes that we'll see will flow through the forecast, to your point, right? So we don't expect to have anything else that will need to be modified in the budget right now.
Got it.
Yeah. It's a good question. It's a, it's a little bit semantics, but at the same time, we, we just didn't know when we had the first budget come through, if something significant was not going to occur. And so therefore we had a tentative budget approved previously.
Sounds good.
So on that note, I'd like to ask for a vote to accept the change to the budget. Roger, I hope that's appropriate.
Well, I'm looking for a motion to approve the, uh, the changed budget as, as described by Kristin. So move.
Seconded by Liz.
By Raul, seconded by Liz. Other discussion, your questions? No, see, no questions. Uh, Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Jess?
Oh, now I'm thrown off on my rhythm. I'm after Nick. We added Samini, I got thrown off.
Throw you a curve ball there. Is that a yes?
Yeah, I said yes, sorry.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kristin and, uh, and Finance Team and Ellen and Leanna for putting this together.
Yep, uh, you know, and, and again, I want to emphasize the fact that, you know, this is almost $400,000 of grant money that's been added to the budget as a result of the efforts and, and whatnot to make sure that we can maximize that resource available to the school. So that's great too. Um, also want to talk about, uh, the results of the budget. This is going to be really difficult for anyone to see. This has been posted, um, just in general. The, uh, the October, uh, performance is good. We're actually even ahead of what we just approved on the budget due to timing of some of the expenses, which is, which is very normal. So slightly under on the income side, uh, but still favorable on the expense side. Again, a lot of the expenses by month is due to timing, you know, with things like professional development, for example, is always favorable until the classes are done. Um, and facilities costs are also quite a bit lower. And again, a lot of that is timing as to when the invoices come in. So more good news for October. We're favorable by $75,000, which is, which is helping us achieve the 377 target for the year. Any questions on the expenses? Okay. That's good for me, Roger.
All right. Any other questions for Kristin? Uh, going on to Development Committee, Ben?
Yeah, can you hear me okay? Yes. All right, so we met in November, minus one person. So, um, we did talk about our division of, of, um, of responsibilities and to the four different categories. We, uh, did, um, talk about, you know, the different approaches now that we have the, uh, annual appeal letter out, um, that will be adopting one for alumni, adopting one for corporate and adopting one for the community. So we have, uh, four different strategies. Um, and we'll be meeting again, uh, next week to talk about some of those advancements and then kick off some of our initiatives, uh, in January next year. Uh, but beyond that, we had, uh, not too much other going on.
Questions for Ben? All right. Hearing no questions. Uh, Liz, Education Committee?
Um, yep. So actually it, it dovetails on what Ellen presented tonight. Um, it was almost like she was in our Education Committee meeting in November. Um, we talked, um, we did brainstorming around, um, what measures we can be looking at given the challenges of, of looking at our typical measures with, with scores that are non-existent in some cases. And just the fact that we can't really compare year over year because it just, it, it makes no sense. So we did, uh, spend some time, um, brainstorming around sort of what areas we can be looking at. Mike did point out the fact that our, um, our attendance rate was 2% higher than average, um, which in this case is just to me phenomenal. Um, our, our, our attendance rate is pretty high anyway. Um, but to have it even higher, given the current circumstances, I think that's, um, absolutely amazing. A couple of the things that we, we were going to look into is just looking at, um, the numbers of like special, uh, extra help that's being required, uh, requested or special ed evaluations. Um, those are some of the ideas we did also talk about because we had just, um, they had just done the, um, the midterm warnings. We did talk about, um, the fact that those were a little higher, um, mostly at the sixth grade level, which I think that we can all, um, I, I mean, I think that can be attributed to the fact that students coming in at sixth grade to AMSA, it's hard enough to begin with to be doing it remote. I just, I can't even fathom what that's like. So, um, I think that that's something that we will definitely be keeping an eye on. Uh, and then, um, again, just looking at, you know, what other measures we can be considering this year, um, as we, as we continue to be in, in the remote situation. So, um, we are going to be skipping our December meeting because of some, uh, holiday conflicts, but we will be meeting again in early January. So that's it for Ed Committee.
Thank you, Liz. Uh, questions from, for the board for, for the Education Committee? All right. Sheila, Governance?
Hi, so I actually was delinquent and did not make the Governance Committee meeting this month to just full disclosure. So Jill and Sarah, um, were kind enough to update me on it. So we are, continue to work on the board offsite. Um, as Ellen said, the first date will be January 23rd, which will be our diversity, um, portion of the, um, offsite. And then on February the 27th, we'll meet again virtually, um, thus far to, um, do the board's SMART goals and commit, and work on committee goals as well. Um, I know Samini has been working, um, with some of the committee chairs on, um, tracking goals, um, as well. The other thing that I wanted to do, and I'm going to attempt to share my screen, maybe with success, um, we'll see. Um, okay, can people see that? Are you seeing my PowerPoint? Are you seeing my email?
Oh, boy.
Okay, that makes me much more settled. Thank you, Raul. So I did just want to update, we had a, um, question last month at the board meeting about the function and role of the Executive Committee, um, within our organization. So I just wanted to do one quick slide and Sarah, I emailed this to you for, um, just so you'd have it, uh, of what the executive, Executive Committee does. So the function is to act on behalf of the full board to facilitate decision making between board meetings or if some kind of urgent situation arises. Um, the things the committee cannot do is amend bylaws, elect or remove a board member, hire or fire anyone, approve or change a budget, or make a large structural change, like canceling a program, something like that. Um, it is established as it needs to be by law. Um, it's established in our bylaw 5.3 and the parameters on it are really that, um, it will consist of no less than four and no more than eight trustees and that the Chair will be the Chairperson of the committee. Um, and so this is kind of the next bullet is where we kind of came down last time is what is the kind of reporting out responsibility of the committee? And basically what it is, is that the committee reports to and is accountable to the full board. So the full board confirms the committee's decision at the next full board meeting. So just kind of going back to, um, where we were last month, Roger. I think that, you know, I come down and we just kind of affirm what, what you guys had done. Excuse me, I do not have COVID, but I do have a cold. Um, so that's kind of just the big picture overview of the Executive Committee, if that makes sense to people. Any questions on that?
Yeah, and, and just a clarification, because I know this came through discussion in Governance. The word confirmed there at the bottom, the full board confirms the committee's decision doesn't mean that the decision is not effective until it's confirmed. The decision is effective as soon as the Executive Committee votes.
As the Executive Committee rules on it, yes.
Because otherwise it would defeat the purpose of the Executive Committee.
Exactly. So basically they're reporting out to us so that we have full knowledge of what the Executive Committee is partaking in, in our absence. Does that make sense?
So, uh, to follow up on Raul's question, would the board then vote to re, to confirm the decision? Or is it strictly an inform that the Executive Committee informs the board the decision was made?
I view it as informs the board of what their actions were. Um, I'm going to ask Jill for confirmation on that one though.
All right.
Um, I do think though, there could be discussion and the full board could reverse a decision. But in general, I mean, I, I think it's more confirmed than informed because if the full board has a full discussion and for whatever reason, the decision that was made is...
Rescinded.
Rescinded, then it's not confirmed anymore. It's, it's a full discussion and the full board votes.
So we would have a vote to confirm the action then?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay.
But it, it would most likely never happen based on the limit of decisions that Executive Committee can actually make in the first place.
Right.
So.
Which is kind of more like an emergency power situation, you know, situation for something that, that can't be, can't, can't wait or shouldn't wait for the next full board meeting. Correct?
Right, but it does technically need to be confirmed by the full board. I, I... Right. But it does technically need to be confirmed by the full Board, I believe. Yes.
All right. Okay. Yeah, we've used this once in the in the whole history of the school so far. So but we do want to get it right. So it sounds like the guidance is to have a, you know, to have a Board vote on anything that the Executive Committee has decided.
I think the vote can be yes, vote to confirm the action taken by the Executive Committee.
The action taken by the Executive Committee.
Yeah.
And clearly, like with any other decision, we could always revisit and as a full Board, we can revisit in any topic and decide other, a different, different way in the future.
Right.
All right. So given that, I would take a, with this guidance, I think we would then need to vote to, request a vote to confirm the Executive Committee decision from
Actually, if we just voted to review the budget, the past decision was needed because we were doing something outside of the budget. But now we have a new budget, so that we still need to confirm. I mean, we can do it.
And that decision, Raul?
What's that?
Because it folds into that decision?
Correct. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Roger, but the executive decision we made was for the change in the provider and the internet connection and whatnot. That was different than from the budget. That's the only reason we were doing it. But I mean, yes, we can have a vote and then not waste time trying to get into technicalities.
Not to get on parliamentary procedure, but I think just on paper, it's better to have the vote.
Sure.
All right. Yeah, we got, okay. So, so I will take a, I will, in the interest of getting the parliament procedure right and do cross our Ts, I'd like to take a motion to approve the decision of the Executive Committee from the October meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Can I get a clarification on what that decision was? I'm sorry.
The decision was to contract the second internet provider for AMSA.
Thank you.
And the reason was that it was, and the specific reason was it was an unbudgeted item.
Was that Sheila and Jill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes, sorry.
Nick?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yep.
Ben?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Sheila, back to you for more Governance items?
I think that covers it, Roger.
All right. Did you, could you just review the dates again for the two Board offsites?
January the 23rd for diversity. We talked about 10 to 12 for that in terms of the hours. And then 227 for the kind of planning and goal setting. And I don't know, is that the same hours? Jill, I'm sorry. I don't have that written down on my notes.
We, we're going to cut an hour into Raul's sleep-in time and make that nine to 12.
Bye, Raul.
Bye, Raul.
Hey, Jess, I'm looking at Jessica's face.
Yeah, that is a big boo hiss from Jessica.
I just want to say that on a normal Saturday, Sheila Kelly has the dogs walked and the food shopping done by eight. So I won't hear it.
Sheila Kelly is a better woman than I, Gunga Din.
It's okay. I'll be awake, I promise.
All right. That's it.
Just thank you for not having it at 8:00 AM, because that's just too painful for me. I'll persevere, but not my, not my preferred time for meetings.
Is there, speaking of the calendar, I used to be able to see it on my Google Calendar. Is that a board-end thing that's happened? Is it only me, or do other people get the Board meetings to appear on their Google Calendar? Is that something? I only get the ones I get the email from Sarah, but I don't like have a year's worth. Is that possible?
Yes. If you, if you answer, if you accept it, it should go automatically to your calendar.
No, I think Jess is asking if there's a year's worth on the calendar so that we can see in advance what dates, like three months in advance, when the date of the next Board meeting.
Oh, you can find that on the shared AMSA folder.
Yeah, I used to have that, and it used to show up on my calendar, and it doesn't. I don't know if it's also doing that for other people. I'll take it offline, though.
I don't have it, and I would like that. I don't know how to get it.
I will send it to you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. All right. Done with Committee reports. Anything I missed? All right, we had no, no items nominated for discussion. I'll make one last call, just in case we had anything come up from the Committee reports.
No, just a couple of comments. And I don't know if this is discussion or just Raul sharing his opinion. But on Tom's public comments and the AP scores and a couple of things, first of all, I want to make sure I take an opportunity, because I want to make an effort in doing this, highlighting how every time I see Ellen's reports and the comments from the teachers, every time somebody from the community steps up and talks in the Board meeting, I feel more excited, more proud of being part of the school community, even as tangentially as I am of being a parent yet of an AMSA student. But I do want to make that explicit, you know, the fact that, you know, it doesn't matter which side of the argument it's happy or sad about, whatever we did, there's always somebody willing and passionate enough to step up and be part of the conversation. So I definitely want to make sure that everybody hears that. And again, I'm speaking for myself, that I would definitely welcome that to continue to happen at AMSA in whatever way is appropriate. So that, that was my first comment. And then I mentioned the AP scores, because I also think it's important for us to echo what Ellen said, that everybody's making an unusual effort this year and producing unusual results as well. So we're living up to our value of excellence. And I don't think there's anything, and again, anybody on the Board that disagrees, please speak up, but that makes us feel that we're not sticking up to that excellence that we definitely want, always strive for. So just wanted to say that out loud. You know, part of me feels that on that discussion about, hey, you know, somebody provided some feedback, then there was a backlash and all that, I would love for that to happen in direct, in a direct form, as opposed to, you know, one meeting later, whatnot. But I do understand how you could, if you're on one of the sides, you could be more concerned about stepping up and making your position public and, you know, your identity known for fear of reprisal or whatever. So I know there's no perfect way of having discussions, but I do welcome that kind of direct discussion as opposed to, hey, you know, did we say the right thing? Go back one month later and have continued discussion. But definitely appreciate that the comments were, at least speaking for myself again, well received, and we'll keep in mind on how we react to anything that gets brought up. And hopefully, nobody takes this as a detriment to having lively discussion and being able to, to welcome opposing ideas. And I think we did say that in our comments. I was actually going back to the minutes that, at least I said that. So hopefully, that, that didn't get overwhelmed by everything else. So that's it.
Yeah, I, this is Liz. I just want to echo what Raul said about the AP test scores. And Jessica, I especially want to thank you for pointing out the fact that the students did have a free out, because the fact that they did have that option, and so many students obviously did not opt out, because I think those, the number of tests that were taken this past spring was significantly higher than the previous spring. So I think that that is truly something that is, speaks so much to the students that are at the school as well as what the teachers did during that period of time. I think it's just amazing. So thank you.
Roger, I just want to, if I can, Raul, I think you brought up a really good point. You know, I think we are all open for dialogue, for really respectful dialogue. And I did the same thing. Actually, I went back to the minutes to make sure. I'm like, I'm pretty sure, we tried to say that, because I think it's something that we always try to make it known, that we're here to engage in that dialogue, to really actually participate in the public speaking part and commentary and thoughtful dialogue. So I appreciate the comments, Tom. And it's always something to keep in mind, that respectful, multi-sided dialogue is important to governing any organization. And it's important for us to all move forward. And, Tom, you mentioned it. I actually wrote it down in my notes. But that respect is the key piece, that we make sure that we're doing it in a respectful manner, you know, to all points in the conversation. So I just wanted to echo that. And again, the AP scores were amazing. The fact that kids were able to pivot, I think, shows more that they have a firm grasp on the knowledge and not just how to take a test. And that, I think, is so, it's light years more important than learning to a test in particular, in my opinion. But that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Maura. Excellent, excellent comments.
Could I, can I follow up with that? I think AMSA sort of internally, amongst ourselves, we do sort of sometimes beat ourselves up about being too test-focused, and AP is sort of, and sometimes can be, have a downside to that, like that's all we care about. And I think that we, it's, it's not that at all. I think it's just such a, it's not tangible. But it's a way to kind of, it's a way to reflect what we do care about. It's just, we don't really care about the tests and the scores. It's just that that's how, it's one way we measure what we really genuinely are caring about, which is, is the learning that goes behind that, and the accountability of that learning, and holding ourselves honest about that, and trying to always reach to do better. And, and so I, I don't want it to come off like, oh, we care so much about the AP scores, but really how that's just kind of a pinpoint hole into looking at this really broad community where learning and knowledge is genuinely valued.
I just throw, throw in a thought on top of what Jess just said. And that was something we tried to reflect in the new Accountability Plan, right, the new five-year Accountability Plan. We know we have to use that, that data, because those hard numbers are something we can kind of hold on to and, and, you know, look at year over year. But it really is about the joy of learning and the joy of knowledge and watching kids light up when they feel that magic and that connection with something they've learned in school, with something they can use out in the world. So, you know, I just throw that in there as well. What I just talked to the staff yesterday, you know, we don't always, we don't want to focus on those numbers so much. But, and yet, they were so great that we really wanted to celebrate that as well. But, and it's taking the kids from sixth grade all the way through, and all the teachers who are working with them over all the years. So grateful for all the work that goes in and the family support and the hard work our kids do.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you, Ellen. Thank you, everybody. It's just, I love, I love the good news. And it's really optimistic when we get our kids back in school and in person and be able to continue forth the education the way it was designed to be run. We'll do even better. And it's great that our students and staff have been able to pivot and persevere through this challenging time. Onward to meeting wrap-up. To review, first, I'd like to review any action items from the past meetings. I captured two of them that we're still working toward. I'd like for each of the committees to create and publish on Board on Track their SMART goals for this year. We'll check in on that again in January. And also for the Governance, I think, the Governance to create the SMART goals for the Board for the year. Sheila, did you want to say anything about that now, or?
Um, not right now.
Okay.
We did discuss, and I don't know, Samini, if you want to provide much detail, but I know you were connecting with the different committee chairs with a template, for lack of a better term. But I don't want to speak for Samini. So yes, we can check again in January.
Yeah. I believe, well, we'll check in on that in January. But we do, we do want to both have the, we do want to have the SMART goals for the Board for this school year. I think a lot of it is just making it through the year. And then I think Samini's work is more focused toward our goals for the 2021, 2022 school year. But again, I don't want to speak for Samini. I think we'll
Was there a question for me that I missed? Raul?
Another specific question is that, since we have the action item for Governance to do the SMART goals for the Board, I know we talked about it, and I know you had your format, and you were checking in with the, with the different, the committee chairs.
Yeah. So what I'm hoping to do is to have this year's SMART goals put into the template and the framework that I'm working on. But in the February offsite, we'll start to think about next year's SMART goals and what we think we want to do as separate committees, and connect that to the vision piece that we did back in 2020 January. So yeah, yes, I am interested in making sure that this year's SMART goals are reflected as part of the template, so that we can then look forward to the next academic year's SMART goals. Does that help answer the question? Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Samini. So Sarah, was there other action items that came up during this meeting?
Actually, it's, they're all for me, really. Send the invitation to everybody about the holiday party, post the Executive Committee summary up in the agenda so that you can all see it, and then sending the BOT calendar to Samini and Jess, making sure that it's available to them. And that was it.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Keeping us on track here. Onward to the meeting effectiveness assessment. Any challenges, anything that we should keep doing, looking for feedback?
I think this was the easiest meeting to be timekeeper on.
I was going to say you did an exceptional job, and you may have to be a permanent person because it's only 7:30.
We are like
I was going to say the same thing. Raul did a bang-up job.
We are like 45 minutes ahead of schedule.
I love it. Roger, I like the, I like that you're constantly asking if we want to add anything to the end, so it lets us have time to process. Like if we can't, if we're not like quite sure in the moment, there's multiple times throughout. So I think that works effectively and that we save it kind of for a specific time on the agenda for discussion.
Yes, so we'll plan to, that's going to become, that will become standard practice going forward. We were trying it out. That will be a agenda, permanent agenda fixture going forward.
I think it's a good idea, too. And I also liked it, Maura. I think we just need to be cautious that we don't get to the point where we have this sort of endless agenda item that's just always open, where people are just free to talk on and on. So.
All right. Well noted. Candidate agenda items for January. I pulled from the Board Topic Calendar items from the January meeting, and anything else that we should be talking about in January?
So just to make sure we're not overcommitting ourselves, those, actually, I think Ellen or Jill, please help me out here. Did we say we were going to discuss the poll survey results in February?
Yes, I believe we said, yeah, we said February.
All right. It's not going to be January, but February.
January, that one will be February.
Yeah, we pushed it off. It was later this year than usual.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I just pulled these from the, from our, our standard topic calendar. So as with everything in 2021, things are different. I think the, you know, the SMART goals also may be sliding forward as well. We'll see where Governance goes. And that's about it. Any other special topics for Any other special topics for January? So we've already done the summary of action items. I think we are ready to
Roger, Roger. So what topics do you have for January?
I believe we just have these, I believe we have no special topic requests. It will just be the, I mean, the only one we may have is, but that'll probably be covered in Governance, is the report out on the Board's SMART goals. But that'll be part of the Governance Committee report.
Okay, thank you.
So Roger, are, are we about to do the motion to go into Executive Session?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to bring up one procedural thing before you, you asked for that. Technically, because we're all remote, we need to either state when we move to go into Executive, that there's nobody that can hear us and that we're deliberating and no one, when we're in Executive, we have to make some sort of statement that nobody can hear us and that we're alone. So we could do that when we vote to go in and we could just say, so confirmed. Or we could do a roll call when we get into Executive and everyone can confirm that no one's in the room and can hear. So depends on which way you want to do it.
I defer to you, either works for me.
Technically speaking, we should do it when we're in Executive Session, because I know for a fact that the world is listening on Facebook. So I cannot attest that nobody can hear me.
Right, you can confirm that when you go into the deliberative, that no one can hear you. But yes, technically, by the, you know, the way the statute is written, you're supposed to do, anyone that's remotely participating in an Executive Session makes the statement that they're alone and no one can hear them. So, yeah, so procedurally, that's the better way to do it. We'll just wait
Idea that we, we will do, we will, the Board, Board and invites will be notified and we will do that, do that on entry to Executive Session. And please, please remind me to, that we do that.
Perfect, all right.
We're going to get this, get these things right, get the process going. With that, unless there are anything else to cover, I'd like to take a motion to go into Executive Session to discuss the purchase or lease of facilities, as discussing in open session would be detrimental to our position. We will be inviting Ellen, Leanna,
Mike, Lisa.
Lisa O'Connor and, and Bob.
Baldwin.
Baldwin, who is a contractor for AMSA. Through the Executive Session.
So moved.
I have a move from, first motion by Jill.
Ben's seconds.
Second from Ben.
Is, is it Mike Finkel or Mike Naraki?
Uh, Mike Naraki. Good question. So this, this will be, uh, this is going to be a combination vote, both to go into Executive Session, that will start in 10 minutes, starting at 7:50, as well as adjourn the meeting. So we'll have one vote to cover both of those. So starting with Roal.
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Roger, oh, sorry, Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Meeting is adjourned, thank you. See you, see the, you in Executive Session in 10 minutes, starting at 7:50.